Additional reductions to see if we can go through those one more time, see if there's some ideas.
I'm just wondering, I don't think I have that, do you recall what, I've got it somewhere here, but do you recall what's the?
I can highlight it for you?
No, well, no, I was just gonna say what file that was or what it was.
It was May 24th board meeting?
Is that what it was called?
No, April.
This is, I'm not May 24th, May 5th.
May 14th.
May 14th, sorry.
Got it.
So the first one, of course, on this was the elementary and middle school media specialists?
Wait, what's in that? They put, they put, they put any work, any ideas?
Um, I, I don't know.
Was it in budget or stack in plan?
It was in budget.
Whatever, whatever.
The one in the paper, yeah.
It was in, it was in the, um, I'll read it.
I, I have my.
Okay. Yeah, I cut something out. I mean, I didn't like it.
Do you need me to be down here? What does she want? Five.
There it is.
Oh, yeah, do you have it with you?
I don't know.
What page is that on?
It's towards, um, it's on this one.
Unfortunately, I don't remember it no well.
Mr. Clower, you, you almost look like a, you know, college student, like in a round.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got one here.
You've got a paper on.
Tell me, will you do right up?
She needs to write.
Okay, all right, so.
Oh, that was fast.
I'll highlight one.
That's okay. Oh, you have colored copyers.
So these were the areas. These were the areas that we presented, um, starting with the elementary and media, or middle school media specialists, restructuring the Renaissance Center, um, the guidance counselor at Crest, Emory's Middle School Guidance Counselor, La Canto High School Dean, the secondary two mile ridership, and the moving contract. So that's kind of where we, we left it most time.
Okay.
One of the things, if I can just take a moment, because I think there's been sometimes confusion with my argument about Renaissance. And so I want to just give a couple of two cents. Renaissance is an essential asset. This board's shown that. I have questioned costs there and what we can do to reduce those, and, and I appreciate that the staff and the board has been indulgent to explore those in our ever-growing effort to, to look for more money. What I, I think though, that to me comes to mind is that I would rather see it, at least, I would rather see it stay in place, but have a reduction in cost, that we could then take that opportunity to reevaluate that school, not as a school, but as into what programs we can continue to offer, expand on. And if we find an opportunity to scale it back up, as far as staffing wise, we can do that. But I'm saying that in, as opposed to going back and going to a mini Renaissance. Because the concern that I do have and that I recognize is that keeping it in place is a lot easier to scale up or down, cost-wise, but it's still there, than if we go back to the schools and we were to put it there, it is much more cumbersome to then either decide later, oh, that didn't work, and bring it back together. And we still don't know, we, you know, we would hope in that scenario it would get, we'd get that $950,000, but that's a, a guesstimate. If we were to do something like here, where we were to reduce the staff, but keep it in place, we have a much more manageable way of saying that that is the real cost that we'd be talking about. But in that time, I think it would be a good opportunity to say, okay, the out-of-school suspension situation, I hear that's gone pretty darn good. Um, that's what you've been doing, where, yeah, it's been.
There've been sending pieces?
Oh, yeah, they've been sending them there. And, and I hear very positive things about how that's worked.
Day after the board?
I was just gonna say, yeah. So I think like those are things we look at. I think that one of the things we've talked about is whether that be a more severe level at Renaissance, but, but I think another thing we've talked about is those hands-on opportunities for some of those kids. You know, they've had a garden there that I remember for now for some time that has been extremely successful. Remember, they built a bench that I'm thinking, heck, if they built one, let's build 20. I think that the idea is that I, I, I think perhaps there's been a misunderstanding of me wanting to find us to be, run that school more cost-effectively, doesn't mean that that, that program doesn't have value. So I would really say that going through these, I, I would be very open to reducing the cost there by, say, at least $250,000 into the coming year, and then also use that as an opportunity to do like I think Mr. Mullen put together some of those teams. I had the pleasure, I think, Ms. Powers, you did, of contacting Dr. Knott, and I think he had talked to me about some ideas that we could do there to even make that, that entire facility even more exciting. But, so that's just mine. I wanted to state that.
So let me, let me just be clear here. You're not advocating, none of us have advocated closing the Renaissance.
Absolutely not.
And that was in the paper today, and I don't, I don't know, we, we never said closing. What we said is we needed to look at those costs. Costs were alarming compared to mentioned classrooms, and what could we do to reduce the cost? One of the things that's been suggested to me in my conversations with other principals about the Renaissance is that there is still an ongoing need for elementary school behavior, fourth and fifth grade maybe even, and so we might want to look at that. How could we even just have one classroom? I don't even know how many kids we're talking about, but I know the principals have said to us.
Sure, each school has one or two.
What?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, I just want to check on the other schools.
And that'd be 22, if you're counting.
And it's interesting, because talking, I had an opportunity to talk to a couple of the staff yesterday, and they were saying, you know, we've done this with less staff, and we can take on elementary and do some other things.
We keep adding and adding to improve the programs and, and, you know, you can keep track of the most total, overall operational costs.
And with the elementary, you'd have to check the certification that circles is a need.
Right.
Very much of you.
And Ms. Powers, you've talked about that behavioral side, that CPI training and all those pieces, and there's not a question that, that continues to need to be a focus at Renaissance.
And these suggested, one of those students who had issues that are causing them to miss school could be serviced at the Renaissance Center, because the issues they're causing them to miss are not just trying to miss school, but they, they're involved in so many different problems, that if they start missing out on school, they could go to Renaissance and get the services that Renaissance offers, and then bring them back into the core, redirect them.
And, and, and so when the staffing plan is, as it comes forward, and I think you started here with, you know, with, you know, with identifying in this, you know, four teachers, three aides, TOSA. If it's that, and I think that's, that would be a place, if there's, if there's other opportunities to do it, I think the idea is keep Renaissance in its location, but we need to scale it down by at least $250,000. And I think you've already shown us how we can start by doing that.
We also need to look at administrative costs again, you know.
Absolutely.
You have 90 kids, you have a principal, assistant principal, you know, a number of other people that aren't in classroom, and really, you know.
The ESE and the P, I guess it's, it's all those pieces.
It's all those pieces.
And we know, in, in, in the earlier days, there was, there was much less than that, so.
All right, and let's talk about the media specialists then. My biggest concern with media specials is cutting position at elementary and middle. We have Common Core coming in, we have the one-to-one that's expanding greatly. Very big game, all of a sudden to say, oh, by the way, we don't need, need media specialists, or we're gonna cut a position. No one really, I think, has had time to really define what those needs are. I think it's middle school and elementary school so quickly and so deeply, so I would, I, I don't want anything to occur quickly without giving it sufficient opportunity to say, maybe it's not the media specialist position that needs to be eliminated. Maybe the media specialist position is changing, and maybe we need to redefine what the needs of the schools are before we cut those positions, because they could be critical to the development of the curriculum and the ongoing need for instructional technology, I mean, instructional materials through technology and the development of, of all the new things that we're, we're headed. And then find ourselves short-staffed and have the inability to actually be able to develop those things. So I, I'm very reluctant to cut any position at elementary or middle.
So you're saying that media specialists, that they take on roles of the technology specialists and change jobs?
Yeah, I don't want to say whatever it is. I think the principals need to redefine what their needs are.
By telling us, you know, like, for example, Pasco, I think Pasco calls it a super specialist or some, I keep thinking they're gonna come in a uniform with a cape. But I think they've said, and, and, you know, we've done this, this board supported, I think, this before with the curriculum specialist. The curriculum specialist, again, became TOSES, and depending on that school, it was, so. Maybe the answer is, is that we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was wondering, who, who would write a new job description?
Well, the principals, I mean, we don't write the job descriptions, somebody does. The Personnel Department, the principals, the superintendent, your staff write the job descriptions based on what their needs are, and maybe the changing requirements of what kind of background education people may need to have in order to meet the needs of the school. But again, maybe not every school has the same needs. You know, you have a school that's got some, got a handful of people that are very technology savvy, and you have another school that has nobody that's technology savvy, so you need to, you need to have a technology person, maybe other school, there's plenty of people that would be successful.
And the TOSES, that's, that same thing happens. Some TOSES are more reading-oriented and, or management-oriented, and other ones are more curriculum and.
So I think it needs to be flexible enough that.
How long did it take, or when did you guys start when that, when the curriculum specialist morphed into the, did that happen? No, no, I'm sorry, I meant the time of the year. Was it about this time of the year, was it?
Well, the decision was made prior to this, I think.
Okay. So I guess, would it be possible to do it at this stage of the game, or is it something that we'd have to, to take the year to do that?
Take the shell of a TOSA and kind of, instead of a TOSA curriculum, or something we have student services, we get a TOSA, you know, media type person, I don't know, you could maybe take that shell and start there. That way you're not recreating, you could just be a TOSA.
Maybe we just need to tell the elementary and middle schools, we're not cutting that position of media specialist, and we fill it up more, and then we'll work on job descriptions. I mean, I don't know that, I'm, I don't know that we sit in the elementary school place, but you could keep your media specialists, or you could change your media specialists into something else, what they could do.
Then what about on the staffing plan, call it, you know, we have TOSES. Maybe we have a curriculum TOSA and a TOSA specialist. And the TOSA specialist, again, is that, maybe it's the media specialist, maybe it's the, you know, it's, it's this new, or maybe we do come up with a job description, but it becomes.
What type of major needs and best?
Right.
So what do you want to do?
We can call it TOSA specialist, and just separate.
So that a school gets, they get their TOSA, their curriculum TOSA type, and I call it curriculum just because I know that's, you know, but.
You know, the other thing that would disturb me.
Because, and am I correct, there's no, there's no difference in type, right? I mean, that would be, person would be hired as it's, as it's an instructional staff.
Right.
The thing that disturbed me too, the, the fact that it got from principals, and some principals were adamant that they could do without the media specialist, and some principals were pretty sure that, given the opportunity, they didn't want to give up their media specialist. They were only going along with the group because they, for some reason, decided that they should all be the same, so.
And some said they need an entirely different type of person, which.
So.
So when you say that the TOSA specialist, so you're saying that is the, the media specialist with additional?
Or, and, and I don't know whether that becomes something that may.
Pick one, pick, take one. You want to keep your media specialist, keep your media specialist. If you want to turn it into a TOSA specialist, change, change.
Whatever your needs are, whatever your needs are.
I mean, that's.
So let me, let me just ask this one question, I'm just now thinking of, at middle school, their technology person is a support staff right now. Would we be suggesting that if they?
Well, I think, my feeling with the, with, with the technology, and I, I'm sorry to go on the Pasco County trip again, but I think we need to centralize technology. Those, I think that we, by assigning these people to an individual school is not using those services best. I still believe that instead of those being on the staffing plan for a school, those technology people need to be part of TRC, and let us define the, where they need to be going in a direction. And I, so to me, it shouldn't be that. I think that, I still believe that the technology people, we would best serve them because, like, we find out, one school, they don't need to cut, the, the technology person is often sometimes doing other activities because they may not need that technology person, and another school is, I hate to use the word suffering, but could use some extra technology support. So it, you know, if TRC had that ability to do that, I, I just think we'd, I would rather see them come off of the staffing plan altogether, part of the schools, and go into that. And that's just this, that's just my opinion.
Okay, why don't we start the elementary staff? Okay, on there is listed the media specialist, so.
Where do you have the TOSA there? Where is the TOSA listed, the regular TOSA?
Instructional position.
I see, here's my only thing, I would really like to, I would still say something of a specialist, because I do think that we're, what we are still, though, trying to focus this on are those areas, meaning technology, media, Common Core curriculum development, and, and one-to-one integration. Those are the things that the principals have all been talking about. So I would hate to see that also than, than a school not use it in those areas. But I think that's generally enough parameters without going too off-board, unless the support feels differently on that.
This question is what, what's this really, this question?
That's what I'm saying, we haven't really defined any of it.
Well, here's what we could do, we could leave it as is for this school year, and, and that way, we've got it. And you all have given us a direction to morph that into more.
Yeah, I would like all these people to have a years' notice that this position could be changing based on the needs of the school. Let people have time to work it out as far as what they need, because you know what? We're starting one-on-one where, I, I, IMS.
LPS, well, I'm sorry, we're starting it now. Crystal River Primary, Crystal River High School, LPS, and then at each, the middle schools, which would be Crystal River Middle.
Okay, so you know what, I don't think they know what their needs are yet. We're really, again, you know, we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna make all these changes, but we haven't provided any, anybody to help them do that, and they don't know what they need.
We didn't add Citrus Springs.
I know, and they found out, that you know what, they had some real needs for our support and help, so.
And I think that still gets defined. I think, and so you're right, I, I think it may. But what we are saying, again, as a board, and I, and I can support that, but that does mean it is not a cost savings, so we need to make that clear, that, and that's, but that means that that's not, that's $500,000 that we are taking off the table.
Yeah, but I think, here's the other thing, I think if you have an individual principal who says, I would rather use this position in a different way, then I think you should say to them, do it, do it. We're not saying you have to get rid of your media specialist, but we're saying if you, now let's do this, let's make it TOSA for current time, TOSA slash media specialist. And then we've got the charge to go back.
I like that.
And update that position, okay?
Okay, the second thing on is.
So the media specialist, that's the only change we made so far, media specialist or the TOSA?
TOSA.
TOSA slash.
So it's either or, either or.
Just want to make sure we captured.
But I think what we're sending in direction is now we'd like to see what principals.
Oh, I understand that for us, and we'll, we'll do that.
And if you look at, under each of their days, number of days, we would like to recommend or suggest that every one of our instructional positions go to 196. Take those extra days, add it under the guidance counselor, as we'll cap, just put extra days. Give the principals extra days to be flexible, to use them on whichever position they need.
How many extra days are we gonna give them?
Well, currently they have 30, but that's with only one ESE specialist, but each, each school's got 30 extra days with everyone included. We could give them those days. So these, each school has 30.
That'll be up to the principal to decide.
Now, if you want to back down a few days, we could back down a little bit. Maybe for this current school year, we give them what they've got, and then work with them to see what they'll do in the future. Just a thought.
The principal decides the certain days.
And/or.
Amongst the.
Make them all 196, and we'll meet with the principals, and we can bring back to you the number of days that they feel like, and meet with the different groups. Tell us really what you do before school, after school.
What can you live like?
And what can we live like? And not. Just a thought.
Does that include the two, the two 17s? Those are the bookkeepers, the Daddas, all those?
No, those are, because our instructional are 196, but that's discussion to the support staff.
Well, if you have the principal, do you know what the principal, they're in school by themselves because they're doing scheduling and.
Right, and they have students trying to, trying to come in, they're, they're buying things during the summer, so they do need those positions.
Okay.
But those are conversations we are having.
But again, are, can those positions be more flexible in that sense?
That was, I think.
Separate, two days off, you know, and we're on here, so we'll include that piece.
You know, I mean, bringing, you could bring in the team on these days as opposed to.
And we've tried to have, not tried, we have had conversations with principals to try to get them to start thinking that way, so we can.
And, and doing the days does not require a bargaining situation? Is that, at least, at least that's, that's our understanding?
Administrators are not.
I mean, that's ours, has not a bargaining, but we're gonna have.
I was thinking like the, the guidance, I'm sorry, not the guidance, the ESE specialist.
We always vote to have them.
Will we approve the staffing plan?
Okay, that's.
Yeah, they're not entitled to the extra days, I don't think it's in contract, why would it?
And so we're.
May 30th.
Maybe we're gonna look at flexible scheduling.
Right.
May I?
May 30th.
Start them voting on the final of the day, let's make our recommendations, hear their thoughts. We'll find out from legal work, if there's any review, and then we'll know when we come to June.
So you don't want us to approve the staffing plan?
We're not gonna go on.
So we need to remove that from.
Well, can we, go to the direction of where we think we're at, then present it to you?
Yeah, we want to go through.
Yeah.
And make some corrections.
He's getting nervous.
On the instructional position with the asterisks on the elementary, that's what we currently call our TOSA. Do we just call it TOSA slash curriculum? Do we just change that name?
Sure.
Okay.
I think so.
We had TOSA slash media.
So that's why I said then we have TOSA, we have, because this then would be TOSA slash curriculum.
Ah, two, okay.
We're not taking away, we're just changing it.
Yeah, do we need to say that latter for those watching, we're not taking it away?
So I, I think, those are the only changes?
Now, this is on elementary, just so the.
Correct, it's elementary.
We're still on elementary.
So we'll have a discussion about days until June.
Oh, what about the minimum? Do we want to look at that, the minimum staffing plan, or wait?
Oh, on the elementary schools, or smaller schools, we have the minimum staffing level.
Is there something that we're?
Well, we have two schools that are under 400.
No, but I'm in.
We had this here. What was the difference? The proposed one had 450.
I don't have that.
Less than 450.
Right.
So, yeah, you know, I, I think we probably need to be more equitable, but you think?
I'm, I'm missing.
Well, in the staffing plan we have right now, assuming that 650 students are alone. This one will make a differentiation for schools that have less than 450. So it would be, that TOSA would be cut down.
And, and you know, with that, Mr. Walker, did that, that change? I don't know that I, is that not a savings at this point, because that's what we're doing?
It's already in.
It's in place, so, so it's not a savings, but it, it would then follow what we're.
It's just trying to align.
So then we do need to keep that, I mean, we need to do this.
It would. With that less than 450, it would take us down to one, one guided slash data secretary, which is where we are at with one of our small schools at this time. We have shared with Homicasa that through attrition, as soon as a position, a secretarial position comes open in the district or at a school, we are going to move one of those employees to that position. And with regards to the TOSA right now, we have a TOSA, Jean Jaworski, that is being shared between the two schools, Homicasa and Royal City. Already, yes.
Okay, good.
Those are the only changes with the less than 450 group, so if we want to add that, we can certainly do that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Middle school?
Okay. Since he'll make these changes, and then we'll email these out.
So we're taking off the media aides, take them off.
Yeah, yeah.
Be more than.
Red, red, brand, on that, okay? All right. Middle schools, um.
I think the same thing with the media specialist becomes a TOSA media or TOSA specialist, however you do that, and then instructional becomes TOSA curriculum.
And then the dean, I would ask, TOSA student services.
No.
And that.
It's currently said, called the, called the dean.
And that is, right now, the only school we have that hat is.
Emory's.
Emory's Middle School, correct?
All right, wait, how many schools does Emory's Middle School have?
She's projected for 987.
And what, so who's the 12, anybody 1250?
I don't know.
Do you have any school that has 38?
Remember, Citrus Springs one time had.
Emory's Middle School usually have.
Yeah, that's right.
But when they started declining enrollment, they got rid of one.
So we don't have any, any middle school that's called 50? Okay, so we don't have any school that has 3, so different.
And we'll have the same conversation with the 196 and the days that we're having in elementary, okay?
Take off the media aide there.
All right.
Say that again?
We'll have the same conversation with the 196 instructional staff, and the flexibility of the days for principals, with the principal.
Then, you just said the, yeah, the media aide, right. The, again, I, that tech support specialist, which it starts then at the middle school. Are we, do you want to still keep that on, for this year, on the, on the staffing plan, and, and look to transition that? Or is that not something that you see, that you see that need, or?
We've had that conversation with Dr. Daddis, and I think he's very supportive of that idea, because some schools have everyone needs and others, at different times of the year, so.
Does the board have any feelings?
About what?
I'm sorry, the last one here. The tech support specialist, they coming off the staffing plan and going to TRC, or? Meaning it's away from the school site and it allows then the control of that to be, not just a single, to support only a single school, but it can.
We've gone backwards more.
I think with the IPads coming in, you need to leave them right here.
It is a big problem for the past five, eight years, but to have one that was not in school, to try to get that person to come to school, was a very difficult situation. You just had to wait a couple of days. So having a person on campus works, having a person not on campus.
And I, and the concern that I just continue to have is resources, and that they're a 251. Right now, what happens is, like, for example, we're gonna have, you know, this year, now the, with the, the middle schools, you have one there, but now, for example, you go to the high schools, two of the high schools are gonna have them, they're not gonna have any initiatives going on at those schools. So there's where now staff could be benefiting another school. So there's where now staff could be benefiting another school with those resources that are going to be desperately needed.
Sharing.
And that's really what my, that was really, to me, the purpose of that, was about trying to share some of those resources. So I don't have super strong feelings about it, I just, I'm just saying how we can best manage.
I will take that also to the principals and we, and Dr. Gaddis, and we'll pull that for two days.
And I, and again, it doesn't have to be on this plan.
And it can be for when we, for your job description.
Don't you think the schools that are getting the iPads will need the technology specialists?
For sure. The concern is.
At the school, at the school, yeah.
So did we make any change or not?
We didn't.
Okay. But there is one other change that I did want to bring out, the office clerk. I think if you see the red line addition, we wanted to just move that one up to the other, other line, to make it consistent with the days.
And the days would be?
Do you see that?
High school?
High school.
You will look under the 1500 students for the changes, which are just in the beginning. Take dean, the TOSA slash student services. 1500 students, it will recommend to change the TOSA student services to two. Citrus High School currently has two deans, when I add the staff, this was put in place several years ago and was never changed.
Do we have a dean in Christopher River?
No.
I was just going to say, we don't, I mean.
They, they had one, and then he left, and because it was wrong.
No, I was thinking that, I was just going to say, I was just thinking they're down a dean then, right now, okay. And the deans are all TOSA's.
That's what they are.
Right now, they just.
They're 196.
Is there any flex days that we've talked about earlier for them?
Same thing, we're going to have that discussion and add up days and see what we can recommend for everybody on 196.
Okay.
And the conversation over.
All right. Is there anything else for me to do with high school?
We'll have a conversation about the tech support specialist.
Okay.
We're asking, do high schools need specialists, I don't know if that's expected by the [inaudible]. But are they also becoming technology specialists?
The high schools have a technology specialist, four media, or two of one. Sacks, your partner.
This, would this, what we're describing, meet the need of, or meet the criteria for staff accreditation?
We will.
Because if it does, I, I'm on that same thinking, that I think that those are clearly along those same lines.
I think you could make that argument, because either or, it's either a tech or a media, correct, for Sacks?
Two.
Whatever it is, we may just need to, you know, just, we may just need to make sure we have to call it something specific for their.
Without description.
Yeah, it may be that.
Because the eighth graders are going to come over, ready to go, and they're someone they're receiving them, that's it.
Do we want to look at Crest next?
Well, I think we're, everything was fine with the other changes, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, and then we also, on the staffing plan, we were putting those ESE eyes back on, and we had that conversation, that they would be on the plan.
Right.
Okay.
Did you hear this, a new high school chart? Can I imagine that?
Yes.
I don't know what happened to it. This one, right? Did you all get this? Must be in my [inaudible].
Thank you, Suzie.
Who's the testing, or where is the testing specialist for the high?
Oh, there is the testing specialist.
Pretty good? So. So we kind of intermingled the staffing with the budget reductions. It looks like everything we just spoke about is pretty well good.
All right.
Now, does that, that includes, I'm looking at our possible additional reductions sheet. That staffing plan, if I recall, included the Crest Guidance Council reduction, the Emory's Middle Guidance Council reduction, and the dean at La Canta.
Yes. The mowing contracts we can accomplish, I think that's a good one. Secondary two mile ridership, the question was to come back with a one mile ridership number, I think I said it was 17,000.
Now, what concerns me, did, I don't know, did we need to give you direction on that, or did we?
I don't know, I don't.
I just, I have, I just.
We don't have sidewalks.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, I, I just, first of all, one mile at 17,000 just does not work it to me to have one child have an incident, and the rest of the savings just to me is not.
So we will carve out.
And I do think, while people don't understand, this is not about trying to help, you know, avoid a parent from coming to school, I'm wanting to make sure our students come to school and have an opportunity, and I want them to get there safely, but also in one piece, and so.
And they're [inaudible].
Absolutely.
So lest the elementary school and middle school media specialists and the secondary two mile ridership, the other ones we're good with.
Yeah, there was a question today in the newspaper, I don't know if it was sound off or a letter to the editor or email or something, that said we should charge our kids to take the bus. And I think what most people don't understand is we do get reimbursed for every student who lives beyond two miles. It's the two, two miles or less that we're absorbing the cost of, and we do that for a safety issue, especially in this county that has no sidewalks.
Correct.
If the county would put sidewalks in, kids could find a bike, they could walk, it'd be fine. We'd go pick them up when it rains.
Well, actually, if the Florida Legislature would reimburse us, it'd be fine.
Yes, we're, yeah.
But, and, and for clarification, again, when we are talking about the Renaissance reduction there, it is to keep it in place, reduce the costs of some of the existing staff there, and I'm assuming, and it should probably be said, like everything else, it's been the superintendent's expectation that everyone has a job, they're going to be largely have an opportunity to apply or be immersed into the, to the existing.
Somehow mortifying.
Okay.
Eyes on, sorry. And I'll say to the man, everyone that I contacted, remember, there were a whole slew of people that contacted me, all wanted Renaissance in place.
And just to go back to our two mile ridership, we did a block for a waiver for Forest Ridge, because I think out of the 11 buses, 11 of them were in the two mile ridership, because there are no sidewalks in Forest Ridge, and we asked for a waiver for additional funding for that, because we felt like, they were going to say they had those kids to walk, and they felt like there was plenty of space between, on the side of the road.
We felt that.
When we applied.
Yeah, sometimes they would let their children walk in a gutter, not a gutter, but a gully.
I believe that bear was going to get them.
Rattlesnakes, because of.
Bears.
At bears. Just her little four-year-old daughter. Two miles.
So board, we still need money to come up with.
That makes me cry. Well, I think we, we've come up with a plan, so we, I think, you know, we're hopefully going to be able to meet our reductions in a number of ways.
Are we ready to adjourn the workshop?
We have, oh, I was going to say.
The workshop?
Workshop, do we have to, okay, yes.
Are we ready to adjourn the workshop?
Do we have to put our staffing plan onto the next meeting?
Could I ask that we?
Oh, here it is.
Well, when we.
Could I ask that we can table it?
Well, could I ask that maybe we approve what we decided today, and then we'll come back to you to amend it with those days? But we've changed some titles, we've done some of that that we need to probably, we had to update.
So do you want to leave the approve the staffing plan on the special meeting?
That's what I'm asking, yeah. And then we could come back in June, we can always amend it to include that day question, but.
All right.
So we talked about it in workshop.
So the workshop is adjourned, and I'm opening the special meeting. The adoption of the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Now, we're going to leave approve the staffing plan, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we're going to call.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so all of that we adopt, you judge.
That's right. That's what the superintendent.
Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Dorchen, Mr. Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, who she carries. Susan's comments. Ms. Cernich, did that lady say something to you as she was leaving, because she was wanting to talk to us?
Her topic, she thought had been settled, she was here to discuss media if she had chosen to.
All right, so we won't, we won't call on her, since she didn't hear. Dean Morrison.
Thank you.
Please state your name into the mic.
Sure. My name is Dean Morrison. Let me start by saying I feel woefully underdressed here today, or I apologize for my casualness. I teach at the Renaissance Center, specifically on that classroom teacher E program. And while my assignment in the program is a school, then the school, all of my students have been expelled with services. My students range from sixth through 12th grade. I assist with E 2020 and Plato coursework every day. I teach seventh grade civics. I teach intensive reading, sixth through 12th. I'm also ESE certified. Having said that, I'd like you to know that I'm no different than most of our teachers at the Renaissance Center. In fact, most of our staff far exceeds me in experience and qualifications. Let me highlight just a couple of our highly qualified teachers at the Renaissance Center. Ms. Paula Hart, I haven't asked her permission to do this, so I hope she doesn't kill me when I get back to school, but she's a genius in our presence. She truly is. She's highly qualified, she's a retired high school principal, come to us from Nevada, I believe, and she chose to come back to the Renaissance Center to teach as a middle school reading teacher. She is absolutely an incredible teacher. Ms. Bridget Brothers, hopefully you were able to read her excellent editorial in a Chronicle the other day. She has 30 years' experience teaching. She's the Teacher of the Year of 2011, and she's committed to troubled students with a passion. Ms. Cynthia Hendricks, National Award certified, Teacher of the Year 2010, Computer Technology Certified Reading Teacher, committed to struggling students, 30 years of experience. Ms. Shelley Davis, retired vice principal from, I think it's Indiana, High School Social Studies, qualified, motivated to teach struggling students. Among the above teachers, master's degrees and multiple master's degrees for each. These are highly qualified people in our school that have chosen the Renaissance Center as a place to work. These teachers have chosen the Renaissance Center with all their qualifications and experiences as the, as the place where they desire to apply their expertise. I have three point, three short points I'd like to make to you. Education is what we do. It is the core reason for our existence. There is nothing in the Florida statutes, and I sincerely hope our district philosophy that provides discrimination against struggling students. We have an equal responsibility to all of our citizen students, regardless of their abilities or how they fit into our, I'll say this carefully, sometimes myopic structure. Would you shut down Crest? Of course not. But why even consider shuttering the Renaissance Center? And I am encouraged by your comments today, because I will tell you, at the Renaissance Center today, the mood is, it's going to be shut down. That's what the teachers believe. So we need to reinforce your comments today to them. We need to be committed to equal education for all of our students. I might remind you that the Renaissance Center has the highest percentage of highly qualified students in 2012, and the highest FCAT reading retake levels this spring. Also, our students continue to graduate high school at a very pleasing rate, of course, not from Renaissance, but when they return to their home schools. Point number two, I fully understand that you have a tough job finding a couple of million bucks to cut out of the budget. If not mistaken, last year you reduced your budget by 10.8%. This year, I know now you need to find more. Let me play devil's advocate just a little bit. Place yourself in the position of a hospital administrator. You need to cut your budget. Would you really close your emergency room? Would you lay off doctors? Of course not. You never cut your core values, your core purpose, and if you do, you cease to being a hospital. Well, we have, I sat up late last night going over your budget.
Mr. Morrison, your three minutes are up. If you just summarize quickly.
Thank you. Let me just then move to point number three. Let me read a letter from a student that I received from, I'll receive from one of our students. This is one of many, one of many, many that we get at the Renaissance Center. A big thanks to Ms. Eadman, Ms. Oaks, Ms. Briggs, Ms. Brothers, Ms. Fogan, Ms. Evans, Ms. Castor, Mr. Hall, and you, Mr. Morrison. Because of my experience here at the Renaissance Center, it was so successful, it was not a punishment, but a privilege. Everyone here is now part of a new family. This class was so helpful, and above all, was supportive. I instantly took a liking to you as my teacher here, because you remind me so much of my grandfather, who raised me. And to summarize, I will never forget my time here, I hope that you return in a few, I hope to return in a few months and talk to those that are, you know, here now, our future troublemakers. We have three points that we deal with at the Renaissance Center, dignity, self-respect, and hope. Many of our students come to us without dignity, they don't have that inner core of dignity. Many of our students come to us lacking self-respect, and most of our students come to us without the hope of succeeding in an educational setting. So please remember, the Renaissance Center is not only, not only do we teach academics, we teach hope, we teach dignity, and we teach self-respect. I would like you to consider the impact on your dropout rate and your graduation rate when you scale back the Renaissance Center. I'm here today to ask the board to look beyond our core values when you consider budget cuts, and I know if the solution isn't easy one, it's probably the wrong one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And be sure you go make a phone call right now and tell them what I'm telling you.
Well, I, I wanted to say, Mr. Morrison, I, maybe it's because of the article you read in the paper today, but I'm not sure that we ever discussed shutting Renaissance down. We discussed decreasing the operational costs, that's very different from shutting a school down. And if you all were worried about that today, I, I'm sorry that you worried about it, I don't know how you got that impression, other than it was in the paper today or something, right, or yesterday?
I think it was.
So, we can't control what the newspaper says. We only hope they get it right, and, you know, sometimes making a short little comment gives people the wrong impression, and they, I, sometimes I think the repercussions to how people react. Thank you for telling us that, because that's a message that needs to get out, be careful what you say.
Thank you. I think that the, the point that I probably should make is that I'm more familiar with the high school side, and we have a number of high school teachers right now who are applying for jobs elsewhere, don't know where they're going to be, coming up on the last day of school, will I work next year, won't I work, where will I work? And that, that indecision, you know, that, that uncertainty in the core of our staff necessarily caused a certain degree of turmoil.
And that was just today?
No.
No, recently, I think the legislature gave us that, involved in tons of problems.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Patrick McNoel, I think he left.
Was he a student? He was a student.
Yes, Patrick is a student at the Renaissance Center, and he had hoped to make presentation, but he did have some pride in his face.
All righty. Okay. Businesses. Business and Support Services, Mr. Blocker.
Yes, I'm here to, for the instructional support. Gold run.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, Brian Latton. I'm so glad I talked to him last night because otherwise it would have been very heartbroken news today. Brian Latton is one of our students who grew up here and became a teacher and he's gonna go into business with his dad doing the tours.
Yep.
As a very now experienced teacher and from teaching in the class, his classroom.
He was an outstanding math student in Citrus County and he's leaving.
Where's he going?
Oregon, he was told.
Really?
His wife got a very good position, I was told, in Oregon in medicine, so he's really good also. And we, he's already been hired.
He was one of those kids, Linda, wasn't he, that we had a bus to the high school to take math because he was already taking Algebra I and Geometry in middle school and they didn't have anything for him. So he got on the bus every day, went to Citrus High School or his dad drove him or something.
Exactly. And the children, his brothers went up to the University of Florida to do the same to get more and more math. Very bright students, very gifted.
Do we have a motion to approve the instructional and support recommendations?
I'll move approval of the support, of the personnel for support and instructional.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0. Approve the 2013-2014 staffing plans with a bunch of changes.
No, there wasn't.
No, with the name changes.
Name changes?
TOSAs on all of them, from instructional first position to reduce the curriculum for media specialists on the elementary and middle school to say TOSA slash media.
Okay. Okay, so we're not, you're not, we're not, we're not working off of the post that you gave us, okay, that had the media aides.
Correct.
But we are including the reduction of, in the smaller, the smaller...
The half.
Yes.
And that office clerk change.
Right. For the two smaller schools.
We got them all?
Suzie's got them all.
Suzie's got them all now.
And then I would ask if we could get the approval, knowing that we will come back to work on the days, but that way we have the staffing chart approved, so we can move forward.
All right, I'll move approval of the staffing plan as it was amended today.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Deutsche and a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any further comments, discussion?
And you'll bring back you...
Dismissed.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0. Do we have any other business that needs to come before the school board? Mr. Mullin? Ms. Powers? Mr. Kennedy?
Do we have a schedule for our budget workshops that are coming up in June?
The June workshop is the next budget workshop. Which is, I don't know the exact date.
It's the second, the fourth?
Fourth, too.
Is that the one we're gonna have?
In June, correct.
I'm not gonna be here, so since there's only four of us, unless someone gets appointed, in the meantime, I will, Mr. Kennedy will help me Skype in or something. I'll just tell my husband not to drive to any time, I'm like, it's class.
You're in that gusher that you always sit by.
Gusher. Oh, no, I was in, I was in Yellowstone with the gusher.
Geyser?
The geyser.
Geyser.
Old paper went off in the background. That was funny.
Okay.
It goes off every 45 minutes, I think.
We agree to do.
Anything else, Ms. Christian?
Great graduations so far. I can't imagine that the Kennedy wasn't gonna be also great.
And the bus is leaving at 6:00.
Oh, okay, thanks, yeah, thanks for the hands up.
Ms. Seymour? Hardy? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. 12:30.